All right.
Good job.
All right, we're gonna open up the meeting with a pledge of allegiance, okay? A pledge allegiance to the flag. Robert, can you open it up in prayer, please?
Dear Father, help us with this technology. Give us the ability to best serve Kenner. We ask this in your name. Amen.
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 Mr. Sinak?
Here.
Mr. Ahmed?
Yes.
Ms. Bezos? Mr. Bloom?
Here.
Ms. Sadi? Mr. Johnson?
Here.
Mr. Pastor?
Here.
Ms. Sarah? And Mr. Dufour?
Yeah.
All right. Ms. Darrinburg was telling us that we cannot adopt the minutes from the January 22nd meeting because she wasn't able to send them out to anybody. So, we're gonna skip over that. So what is the first item of business today?
Case P420, an ordinance approving the lease of lots 76, 77, 78, and 79, square 181, Veteran Heights subdivision, Kenner, Jefferson Parish, Louisiana, to Branch Communications for the purpose of placing a cell tower.
All right.
You want me to go ahead?
Go ahead. Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, let me, uh, let me get the presentation up. Can everybody see that?
Yeah.
Yeah, look at that.
Cool.
Excellent, all right, so. The applicant in this case is Branch Communications, 7335 South Lewis Avenue, Suite 300, Tulsa, Oklahoma, 74136. Properties are lots 76 through 79, and they front Bessemer Street on the east, generally bounded by Interstate 10 to the north, Veterans Boulevard to the south, Decatur Street to the west. The lots are currently undeveloped, and they're used by the Kenner Police Department for storage and overflow parking and other things that whatever they need. The property is currently zoned. Sorry, it's taking a second for it to. There we go. The property is currently zoned C2. Development across the street is the Kenner Police Department. Lots that have but the site to the south are undeveloped and used for storage and excess parking for the police department. Lots 33 through 37, which have but the site on the west, and lots 72 to 75, which have but the site to the north, are developed as parking. They were for the hotel that was there, but I believe the hotel has been torn down or is in the process of being torn down. The purpose of the alienation to Branch Communications, we've placed a 50 by 50 foot section of that with a cell tower. In order to do this, the city decided to go through a bidding process. So they hired Murphy Appraisal Services to perform an appraisal of the annual lease value of the lots. The appraised appraisal was completed March 5th, 2020, and the annual lease was set at $9,216. Once the appraisal was complete, the city put out RFP, letter bid 20-1958, to lease land for a cell tower, to solicit bids from companies wishing to place a cell tower on the lots. The terms included in the RFP by the city were an initial five-year lease with two additional five-year renewals, a $9,216 minimum annual starting amount, and there were a couple of other things, but these were the main, the main points. Branch Communications was the only party to submit a bid by the 4:00 PM, April 15, 2020 deadline. Their bid included two options. Option one was a $15,000 annual lease, an initial five-year term with five five-year renewals, and an annual 3% escalator. Option two was a $225,000 payment for an easement purchase agreement that covered a 75-year timeframe. The city chose option one, which was the $15,000 annual payment with a 3% escalator over, would ultimately will be 30 years. The initial five-year term, and then five additional five-year renewals. And that concludes the planning department's presentation.
All right, for the benefit of everybody else that's listening, and besides the commissioners, I spoke with Wendell earlier, and he said the reason they're asking for this is that there was a tower on the Red Roof Inn, and since that hotel's being torn down, they have to put up a new cell tower, and that's, I guess, the closest lease. So if any commissioner has any questions, go ahead. Any commissioners have any questions before we open it up to the audience?
Yes, could you tell me about?
I think, I think Rita is on here twice. I see feedback, got a cast out one of them. Can you hear us now, Rita?
Rita.
We can hear you now, I think.
And you, I can hear you now.
Okay, we can hear you. You had a question?
Did you have a question?
Rita, were you gonna ask a question?
Uh, I would like to ask a question if.
If. Go ahead, Robert.
It seems like the amount they're offering seems kinda trivial to a cell tower. I always thought that, you know, cell towers pay a hell of a lot more than that for rental of a piece. Now, obviously, I've never been involved with that, so I have no idea. But, you know, it does seem a little bit on the weak side, if, you know, maybe it isn't, I have no idea. Is this comparable to others, I would, I would ask?
Well, I can only answer on the planning department's behalf, and that is that this was the first time we've ever actually handled a process like this. So, I mean, I have no clue. I know that the bid that was submitted was substantially more than the appraised value of the property. So, in that respect, you know, I would say the city is actually doing.
Oh, I know it's doing better, but is it doing what I would call, you know, when we, at one point, our lodge, they actually came, wanted to put a tower up, and they were talking, they're like, we're $5,000 a month. Now.
An RFP.
Years and years ago, and this, and that's all historical information. So I have no idea what's going on right now, but it just seems a little on the light side. But again, unless we have other evidence from other places that have towers, there's just no way of knowing.
Robert, if you're curious about the, the terms of the RFP, that's, that's made public. You can pull up the RFP, but, I mean, I don't think we're voting on the price. I think we're just approving or denying for the planning section. But all of the answers to your question are made public in the RFP, which is published online.
Well, I, I understand that, but I, you know, just because only one guy came for it, if they're the ones that need it, you know, it's one of those, you know, I just don't wanna give away finances that the city obviously can always use. There's no city that can't use more money, that's, you know, that's the honest. And I, it was just a curiosity thing, rather than, you know, I hate to find out, oh yeah, they got it for $15,000, but the one over here goes for $15,000 a month. Again, I don't know, and I bring that up only as a, you know, when you have something of value, you know, I don't like to give it away, is all I'm trying to say. But I understand where you're coming from, and yes, I know where we're, what we're up against or going for.
Well, there was, there was, there was other interests, but the other interest declined to submit a bid. So, you know, they, Branch Communications was not the only group that knew about the RFP among anyone else who saw it when it was published and, you know, from the city. So, you know, speaking on, on that alone, I don't feel that there's been any. I, I think the city is getting exactly what you would expect, an open process, and this is what the bid was.
Okay, well, I understand, I, you know, I, I'm coming from it for more of a owner slash landlord kind of scenario, in the sense that, okay, you want it for 15, but it's worth 50, you know? But that's, you know, a whole nother problem, it's not governmental. I mean, I'm, I'm coming to it from the commercial end of it, and that's, you know, I just wanted to, and it may be, this may be absolutely correct, but I've always thought cell towers were the heck of a lot more than what seems to be coming out here. Having said that, I'm now through, and we can now continue with where we're going with this. Because that has nothing to do with what we're talking about, I know.
All right, Robert, um, if there's no more questions from any of the commissioners, then do we have anybody in the audience that wants to speak in favor of this proposal? Oh, all right. Is there anybody in the audience that wants to speak against this proposal? Speak now. Well, we don't have for or against, so I guess we can go to a vote then now.
Do I move that we approve?
I second.
In favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Raise your hand, or aye?
Aye.
All right, will that?
Anyone against that?
Aye.
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 It looks like we've got a unanimous vote. So it passed unanimously. All right, Kiva, you wanna give us the next case, please?
Case P520, an ordinance approving a plan of re-subdivision of lots 1 through 8, 12 through 16, and 3 through 27, square 34, and lots 24 through 40, square 35, into lots 1A, 5A, 7A, 13A, 16A, square 34, and lots 24A, 27A, 38, 30A, 36A, and 48, square 35, Crestview Office and Industrial Park, Kenner, Jefferson Parish, Louisiana.
All right, thank you. Okay, Mr. Dufour, can you give us the details on this case, please?
I can, let me open up the. Let me get the meeting up again. The, y'all can see that?
Yes.
Okay, good. Um, the applicant in this case is Howard Properties and Development LLC, Howard Piledriving Company, and Howard C. Austin, 608 Barteria Boulevard, Marrero, Louisiana. The petition property, lots 1 through, oh, sorry, there we go. Lots 1 through 16, and 22 through 27, square 34, and lots 24 through 40, square 35, in Crestview, generally bounded by canal number 15 on the north, 24th Street on the south, Piedmont Street on the east, and Albion Street on the west. Property is currently, currently developed as a site of Howard's Piledriving. The Sharon Street right-of-way between squares 34 and 34 and 35 is owned by Howard Piledriving, who purchased the right-of-way from the city of Kenner. The property is owned light industrial, as is all the surrounding properties. All the properties surrounding Howard are developed with uses that are appropriate for light industrial development. The purpose of the re-subdivision is to accommodate the development of small warehouse facilities on the new lots. Square 34, lots 1 through 15, and lots 24 through 27, all measure 20 by 120, and contain 2,400 square feet. Lot 16 is an irregular-shaped lot, maintains approximately 3,542 square feet. Lot 23 is an irregular-shaped lot, and contains approximately 4,600 square feet. In square 35, lots 25 through 40 are all uniform, measuring 20 by 120, containing 2,400 square feet. Lot 26 is an irregular-shaped lot, and contains approximately 3,043 square feet. The proposed lots in square 34, new lots 5A, 10A, 25A are uniform, measure 60 by 120, and contain 7,200 square feet. New lots 1A and 7A measure 50 by 120, contain 6,000 square feet. New lot 13A is an irregular-shaped lot, and contains 6,471 square feet. New lot 16A measures 53.93 by 120, and contains 66, 6,671 square feet. New lot 23A is an irregular-shaped lot, and contains 7,044 square feet. In square 35, new lots 38, 33A, and 36A are uniform, 60 by 120, contain 7,200 square feet. New lot 24A is a regular shape, contains 6,671 square feet. New lot 27A measures 59.77 by 120, and contains 7,172 square feet. Finally, new lot 40A measures 50 by 120, and contains 6,000 square feet. The proposed re-subdivision meets the criteria for a simple re-subdivision based on no new street or easement of access required, nor any extension or creation of any public improvements being necessary. And that concludes the planning department's presentation.
All right, thank you, Mr. Dufour. All right, do, do we have any commissioners that wanna have, ask any questions at this time? Any, any questions from the commissioners? All right. All right, do we have anybody in the audience that would like to speak in favor of this proposal? All right, I guess Aaron's not gonna say anything.
Well, I'm, I'm gonna say aye for Howard, for sure, you know?
Well, I, I, I have a question for you, Aaron.
Go ahead. Yeah.
I remember on both sides of Sharon, it used to be just your lay-down yard for your pilings and all your equipment. So, that's the, that's the lots y'all gonna develop both sides of Sharon?
Yeah, yeah, one time it was a barn, um, so, yeah. We're gonna develop both sides of Sharon, and we got some lots on Albion as well. So it's, it's a total, it's a total of about 13, 13 lots, that is correct.
Do you still gonna reserve some property for your, for your machines and your, and your piling deliveries and all that also?
No, the, we're gonna be, we're moving out of there. We've leased some property in Belle Chase, just for a, a yard that we're shuffling equipment to. Um, and then, you know, we'll leave some stuff there. Uh, we got our warehouse there that we'll still use as our warehouse, and as our office, and as we get going, and of course, you know, if, if we need equipment there to drive piling for the new buildings, we'll have that stuff as well. But that, that, the only equipment there will be to, to handle the, the new construction that we would be putting in, and to basically move or handle our operations from, you know, our foundation operations will be from another yard.
Okay, so the existing office, is that gonna, you're gonna keep that building there?
We're gonna keep that building, we'll continue to work out of that building. Uh, we, I haven't decided yet, you know, once we get going, if I would shuffle out of that building, sort of renovate that building, and then go back into it. I haven't thought of that, if I would do that, that's a possibility, or we could renovate and just sell it. So, um, either way, you'd have, uh, new buildings and one renovated building.
Okay. Fine, I see what you're doing, okay. Any other commissioners have any questions? I guess not, okay. All right, is there anybody in the audience that wants to speak against this proposal? All right, I guess we don't have any, anybody against it, so.
Make a motion to adopt.
All right, motion. Who seconded?
I seconded.
Okay. All right, let's go for a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, anybody opposed? No? Okay, well, it looks like it passed.
Thank you.
All right, Robert, what's next? Do we have any other business?
I think Kiva has to read the case.
Yes. Part 120, an ordinance approving a plan of re-subdivision of lots 1 through 3, and 7 through 62, square 142, into lot 1A, Lincoln Manor subdivision, city of Kenner, Jefferson Parish, Louisiana.
The, I'm requesting a one-meeting deferral for this case to the June 24th Planning Commission meeting.
What was the? What's the purpose of, of the, of the postponement?
Um, they need to get a thing worked out that came up today regarding the tear-down versus renovation of the elderly living facilities?
Yeah, they were, they were, they were unclear, Wendell, when I talked to Cal, he still had some questions about it that wasn't clear. Yeah, the information he got was a bit, wasn't clear in terms of what, what was actually gonna take place at the site. So he, he asked for a meeting with the owners, with the developers, to see exactly proposal would be the next time to come aboard.
And that's gonna take place in the next week or so.
Right.
I make a motion to defer to the next meeting.
A second.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
All right, it's been postponed to the next meeting. Do we have any other items of business, new items of business on the agenda?
No new business.
No. I'd just like to say, I'd like to thank you all for adapting to this unique situation. I'm not sure if we'll have to do this again. There's a possibility the June meeting will be in the same format. I won't know for a week or two. I'm confident in thinking that the July meeting will be back into the city council chambers, from what I've been hearing. But, you know, that's just gonna depend, and it's also gonna depend on a lot, you know, if we have any members of the commission who don't feel comfortable going back into a meeting like that. You know? So, if anybody has any thoughts on that?
I don't, I'm not uncomfortable, I mean, our desks are about six feet away from each other, and, you know, you walk in with your mask on probably and sit down, you know, it's no big deal to me.
Our meetings are very sparsely attended, anyway. You know, council meetings, sometimes there's 30, 40 people in there. We rarely get more than the applicants who show up. So.
Yeah, comfortable.
The city, okay, good, so, I'm gonna, in terms of whether or not we have to do another Zoom meeting, it's gonna depend on the city as a whole. If the city is back to this, you know, our city offices are back to normal functioning, then I would say it's likely we'll do the meeting in the council chambers. We haven't gotten back full yet, they may request that we continue with this. I know the city council meetings are still being done via Zoom. So if they go back to the council, then we go back to the council.
I would imagine if one of us were to come downhill, that maybe we, could you have a combination of the Zoom and at the thing? Or would it be one or the other?
Um.
Not that I'm, you know.
I would have to, like, our meetings typically are not streamed over the city's KTV page or their YouTube page. Um, if there were, if we were streaming, I would say that would be a good way to do it, you could possibly do it like that.
If one of us came down with a cold or the flu or something, you don't know it's COVID or whatever, you know, it, it just was a, a thought. It's no big deal, we, you know, we can just, you gotta, gotta a month to do something.
Robert, so not, I guess I would say it's only an issue if the ability to have a quorum comes into play. You know, if we have one, one of y'all who gets sick under any, with any illness and can't make a meeting, that in and of itself is, is only an issue of being down one member.
Right, right.
It would become an issue if we were all of a sudden, oh, are we gonna have three or four? How many are we actually gonna have, be able to show up? So, at this point, I would say it's 50/50 on the June meeting. I'd say it's 90/10 on the July meeting, being back into the council chambers.
Let's hope for the best.
Yep. I'd like to join, make, make a motion to adjourn the meeting, please, because I have something that just came up in my house. Another, the arrival of several grandchildren, so.
Have a good evening, thank y'all.
Thank you.
All right, Aaron, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thanks to everybody.
Thanks.
Somebody second?
Second.
Vote.
All in favor? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Meeting's adjourned. We'll see you all next month.
Stay safe, everyone.